I call a meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. This is a public hearing. My name is Richard Stewart. I am the Mayor of Coquitlam, and on behalf of the City of Coquitlam, I want to welcome you all to this public hearing dealing with bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the Deputy City Clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff, how it works is this: Staff from the city’s Planning and Development Department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, after which the floor will be opened to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered to speak, and we have two lists for two of the bylaws, will be given first opportunity to speak. After that, we’ll open the floor. I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It is an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications, but there are some rules. It’s not a question-and-answer period. It’s not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or those in the audience who might be opposed to your particular point of view. So we ask everyone to please restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We’re asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order to allow everyone who wishes to speak to be able to do so. You’re allowed to speak more than once if you’ve got some more good stuff, but please join the end of the line, and we’ll get through it more orderly. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. We please ask you to restrain from clapping, from booing, from cheering any presentation made this evening. As Chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn’t relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or that becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note that if you have a written submission, if you have notes that you wish to have as part of the permanent record of tonight’s meeting, you must hand it in to the clerk’s table before we adjourn that item on tonight’s agenda. After which, once we adjourn an item, council cannot receive any additional information, written or verbal, until after it is deliberated and completed, that item. Immediately following the adjournment of tonight’s public hearing, a regular council meeting will be convened in order that council may give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda, as well as some other items that are on that agenda, and I believe it’s unavailable on the back table. However, if during tonight’s public hearing council members wish more information, or they wish more time to deliberate, we may defer an item from consideration at the council meeting afterward after this meeting. I now call on Ms. Lor to introduce the bylaws on tonight’s agenda, and Planning and Development’s staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item 1, Bylaw Number 4290-2012, is an application to rezone the property located at 812 Westwood Street.
Good evening, Your Worship and council members. This site is located on the northwesterly corner of Como Lake Avenue and Westwood Street. The site is designated street or compact one-family residential in the official community plan, zoning on the site. And to the northwest, south, and east is RS1 one-family residential, RS5 one-family compact residential, and P1 civic institutional is also present to the southeast and southwest of the site. Site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RS4 one-family compact residential, consistent with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate subdivision or lot-line adjustment to permit the construction of a one-family residential dwelling on Lot B under the RS4 zoning. Staff are recommending all final readings to Bylaw Number 4290.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed. They won’t all be that smooth.
Item 2, Bylaw Numbers 4291 and 4292-2012, application to revise the land use designation and rezone the property located at 3429 Harper Road.
This site is located on the north side of Harper, east of Coast Meridian. The official community plan land use designation for the site includes large single-family and environmentally sensitive area and a development reserve on the northwest corner of the site. Zoning on the site into the north is RS2 one-family suburban residential. Zoning to the east is A3 agricultural and resource. To the south, RS8 large village single-family. Into the west, P1 civic institutional. The site is currently vacant. The applicant seeks to amend the official community plan land use designation from large single-family to large village single-family and environmentally sensitive area, and to rezone the site to RS8 large village single-family and P5 special park, to facilitate subdivision into 45 one-family residential lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to Bylaw Numbers 4290 and 4292.
Thank you very much. Counselor Secor.
Thank you. What is an average lot size on this property? From the smallest lot to the largest lot?
Average?
I know they’re all fairly large.
It’s in the report, but we’ll get to it.
Through, Your Worship, approximately 5,500 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
You. Are there any speakers? Whoop, wait. I actually have a list on this one. No, I don’t. Ryan Lucy from Morningstar. Ryan, please step forward. You’ve changed your hair.
Much prettier, right? No, I’m kidding.
Please don’t tell him how much we miss him.
Your Worship, members of council, I’m sorry. Thank you. Just that one, okay. I’m Sophie Prandell, Development Coordinator with Morningstar Homes. Our offices are located at 946 Burnett Avenue in Coquitlam, and I’m filling in for Ryan. His wife is having twins tonight, so he’s asked myself and Robert Morse to step in for him tonight, so thanks for having me. Our application, whoops, I’m missing a slide. Our application proposes to redesign, redesignate, rezone, and subdivide an 8.2 acre of land located on the north side of Harper Road in the Smiling Creek Neighborhood Plan area. A remainder parcel of 1.6 acres that is located in the development reserve will remain under its current zoning. The land is currently designated large single-family, or RS9. Our proposed development envisions 45 single-family homes, all under the large village single-family land use designation and the RS8 zoning designation. As summarized at the bottom of the slide, our proposal increases the density from 42 lots to 45 lots, and staff has been supportive of this proposed development due to the restoration and expansion of the watercourses and riparian areas, and the fact that we’re proposing oversized RS8 lots. The lots in this development will average just over 6,500 square feet and have minimum frontages of 13.4 meters. And while the proposal is to zone the site RS8, the lots will be more comparable to RS9, since the minimum frontage for RS9 is 13.5 and average lot area is 7,000 square feet, whereas RS8 is 4,000 square feet and 12 meters. Now, looking at the watercourses on the site, there are three watercourses that impact the property. The Harper Road ditch runs along the north side of Harper Road to the south of the property. Currently, the ditch is located between 5 and 11 meters south of the site. However, once the required upgrades to Harper Road are completed, the ditch will be 3.1 meters from the property line. At its current location, about 10% of the riparian area is on the site, and once the upgrades are completed, 60% of the riparian area of that ditch will be located on the site. The Harper Enhancement Channel runs along the east boundary of the site. Our proposed development will add an additional 2 meters to the riparian area of that watercourse. The main watercourse on the site is Tributary 5, and it runs at a southwest direction across the west side of the property. As you can see from the photos at the bottom of that slide, previous work on the site had extensively modified and damaged that watercourse, and it’s our intention, we envision as part of this project, to relocate and rehabilitate that watercourse. This slide shows the proposed site plan for this property, which includes the relocation to the east of Tributary 5. This allows for the extension of Southview Street. The channel will be reconstructed to the standards similar of the Harper Enhancement Channel that Westbuild had built to the east of the site. And the bottom of the slide also shows the standard to which we intend to rehabilitate that watercourse. In addition to the rehabilitation of the damaged channel, this plan also includes about 20,000 square feet of additional riparian area around Tributary 5 and the Harper Enhancement Channel. Now, looking at the homes that we propose for this project, the project will be very similar to our Avondale site, which is located at the corner of Princeton Avenue and Coast Meridian Road. However, this product will be on larger lots in this case, and they are craftsman-style homes with usable flat backyards. I would just like to summarize by saying that this project is characterized by oversized RS8 lots and significant enhancement to the watercourses and riparian areas on and adjacent to the property. Thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, I’d be happy to answer them. But if you allow me, I’ve been given some questions by someone who’s attending tonight, and I’d just like to be able to answer those right away.
Okay, well, we will start with Counselor Secor, because he’s pushed.
Thank you very much. What is the largest and the smallest house in square footage on this property?
All the houses will be similar to the RS8 product at our Avondale site, which is approximately 2,500 square feet plus basements.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead with others? Counselor Robinson, Ed.
Thank you. I do have a question about the layout, and I’m looking at some of the cul-de-sacs. Well, there’s one cul-de-sac on one side, and then there’s this bend in the road. And I’m just wanting to know if there’s going to be any pedestrian accessibility through the end of the cul-de-sac, because I’m looking at the, to the north of the property, we have RS, it’s right now it’s RS2, and I’m assuming that that’s going to be rezoned, and there’s going to be more people living there, and I’m just looking for flow of pedestrian traffic. And is there any intention to put any pathways?
To cross into the neighboring property?
Yeah, that will be north of these properties eventually. That will be developed north, to the north.
Not that I know of. No, no. In part of this development, we also have, there will be fencing, obviously, to close off the riparian area around the channel, so there’s also not much opportunity to cross over to the northern portion.
So the only way people from the north will be able to walk down, to come through, will be along the road?
Which is sort of right in the middle of this property. Right. There is a, I believe there is a temporary cul-de-sac or turnaround at the end of the street that looks like it’s just ending for emergency vehicles and the like.
Okay, thank you.
So you’re talking about a temporary bulb at the top of what I think is Dayton?
Yes.
Okay. And then others, so go ahead. If you had some.
Thanks. There were some questions about how we intended to monitor, or how we intended to control ESC on that site due to the soil contents, and how we intend to protect the Harper Road ditch that runs along the south that I was speaking to. And the Harper Road ditch will be rebuilt while the other watercourses are being rebuilt, because it has to be moved north of the site in order to allow for the reconstruction and widening of Harper Road, because it is, I believe, it’s a collector road. We’re working with very qualified engineers and consultants, and we will certainly, once those watercourses have been relocated, build the necessary sediment pond and complete hydroseating on the site, and do our best in order to protect the channels. One of the other questions was about how to monitor subcontractors and be sure that the sites remain clean, and of course, we take great pride in the cleanliness of our sites, and because we are not just the developer, but also the builder on the site, we work very closely with any subcontractor, and also are able, therefore, to respond quickly if there’s any garbage on the site. And the last question was about the proper plantings for the relocated watercourses. And in working with DFO, we know that there is very stringent controls that we have to follow, and we’re working with qualified consultants, Incan, who’s also done work for the city, to ensure that everything is done to their standards.
Okay. My apologies if you already answered this. How much does the Harper Road ditch get moved north? It gets moved north by a couple of meters or something?
It depends on where it is now, because currently, it’s about between 5 and 11 meters from the current property line, and it’ll be at about 3 meters from the property line.
So between 2 and?
And about 6 meters, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Didn’t even miss Ryan. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, council and mayor and council. I would like to speak in favor of this development, and I know Janet Clark was unable to make it this evening, and she also would like to speak in favor of this development. We’ve had personal presentations, we’ve had ratepayer presentations at least twice, and there’s been extensive consultation with the residents in the area. So based on that, I’d simply like to give this a favorable recommendation. Thank you. Sandra Marsden, 3420 Highland Drive, and Janet Clark, Highland Drive. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, this item closed.
Item 3, Bylaw Number 4293-2012, is an application to rezone the properties located at 730 and 734 Dogwood Street.
This site is located on the southeast corner of Dogwood Street and Regan Avenue. The official community plan land use designation is medium-density apartment residential. Zoning on the site is RT2 townhouse residential. Zoning to the northeast, south, and west is RT1 two-family residential. The site currently has two single-family dwellings. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RM2 three-story medium-density residential, consistent with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate development of 22-unit stacked townhouse development. Staff are recommending second and third readings to Bylaw Number 4293.
And for context, at the top of this map is Como Lake Avenue. We have one speaker registered, Marilyn Black.
Mayor, council, I’m here tonight because I would like to record, go on record, as opposing the rezoning of 730 and 734 Dogwood, from the RT2 two-story townhouse to the RM2 three-story medium-density apartment residential. I am the owner and reside at 719 Ducklow Street, one block directly east of the location in question. The opposed rezoning would change the initial development plan that was done for this site for four two-story townhouses to 24 apartments within a three-story complex, all on two single-house lots, best described in the application as moderate in size. There are a number of reasons for which I base my opposition. Existing structures on Dogwood are all either single-family residential or two-family residential, as is the case with the rest of the area within that two-block radius. Structures on the other side of Dogwood are, and will remain, to the best of our knowledge, attached residential. The Coquitlam Neighborhood Plan, for which I pulled Schedule E and will submit, shows that this area for the Coquitlam Plaza is designated for the area between Bresley and Dogwood as Area 24 Townhouses Two-Story. This application, therefore, directly opposes this aspect of the BNP. The Coquitlam Neighborhood Plan, according to Page 2 of the application, supports additional townhouse housing east of Coquitlam Park. This application also directly opposes this aspect of the BNP. Despite the term stacked townhouses, it is for all intents and purposes an apartment complex. A townhouse, by definition, is “one of a row of houses sharing common walls or a row house, especially in a fashionable one, or especially a fashionable one.” This will set a precedence for all other zoning on the street. Property use of other areas, other homes for which will be sold, could easily be zoned, I believe, in the same manner. In summary, the proposed rezoning does not support the current BNP conceptual framework plan. It places a total of 24 units on a small or modest-sized lot, drastically changing the density of a small area. In addition, it places a three-story structure in an otherwise two-story zoning, changing forever the skyline for all nearby properties. We live in a small community. These roads are all small residential. It doesn’t border on any main two-story, or two-story, two-lane traffic roads as Smith and the other streets do. And I’ve also got a signed, pardon me for my nervousness, signed petition by the people on Dogwood that I went to tonight, and I went to nine residences, and I have eight signatures, all in opposition of this. And may I provide these two pieces? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait one moment, please. Counselor O’Neil.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I heard your objections, talking about drastically changing skyline and, sorry, changing the skyline and drastically changing the density.
Yes.
Do you and the people who signed the petition there have specifics about exactly what you’re concerned about that this will do? Changing density doesn’t necessarily have to be bad. We can agree that this is going to change density, for sure.
No, it doesn’t.
What are your concerns regarding that?
It’s zoned for, across the street, is zoned for attached, as I live in an attached home, and it is zoned for townhouses of two-story, and I think that’s very, very in line with our community, with our residential area. But when you take two single lots and you put on there 24 apartment complexes, that’s a big change. We have no major side streets. If you do that to two houses, it’s very conceivable that the next time, the next house sells, they will say, “This is zoned this way, this is the precedence.” I think the zoning plan, as I was able to pull it from the Coquitlam Neighborhood Plan, which had it zoned with all two-story townhouses, was something that I would envision fitting in to the scheme of the neighborhood, the way it was proposed, and I don’t feel that this three-story apartment complex is something amongst all our residential small homes and duplexes, townhouses, is a proper fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Reed.
Just through to Ms. Tiffany or Mr. McIntyre. Do you have a plan showing what’s around it? And when did we rezone it to RT2? That has to be fairly recent, doesn’t it?
Through, Your Worship, sorry. The RT2 zoning occurred in May of 2008, and in terms of your first question, Counselor, could you further clarify what?
I just wondered if there’s any other development. I know there’s development right in the area.
The context zoning.
And what the RT2, was it going to be two-story or three-story townhouses?
And there’s the context zoning.
So in terms of further illustrating what’s the development that is proposed, what the applicant is proposing to do is essentially along Dogwood, in order to address height transition issues, they are proposing essentially two-story elevation along Dogwood, facing the neighborhood attached residential area to the east. Along Regan, they are proposing three-story height. Essentially, what they’re doing is they’re working with the grade on the site, which is going from Dogwood down towards the lane.
And under the RT2 townhouse residential, how many units were going to be on that property?
The RT2 proposal from 2008, I seem to recall it was four units.
Forty?
No, four.
Four. I was going to say, wow, that’s really dense. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I see Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just for clarity and not particularly to challenge Ms. Black, she was talking about 24 units. The report says 22. Are we certain about who’s right?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, it’s 22.
And I note that you talked about attempting to transition the height, and you said two stories across from the attached residential. The report itself says two and a half, and actually, I had my hand up to say, so exactly how is this going to work? There is an underground parking structure. Is there then a basement and then two stories? Is that, or is the underground parking the basement?
If it will help with counsel, I have a rendering here that was submitted by the applicant.
Please do. Fire up the overhead.
Can you place that for me? Tell me which street’s which.
So this side right here that you’re seeing?
This area right here?
That’s the street, that’s Dogwood.
This elevation along here would be Regan.
So essentially, what you’re looking at is, it is two-story in appearance from the street. Technically, there is a half a story below this street entrance here, which is a basement, so it is two and a half stories technically, but it appears it’s two stories from Dogwood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers? Of council, please step forward. Counsel, please step forward.
I'm Don Mukai, and I own the property at 712 Dogwood. And I did some research looking at the Coquitlam website, and I thought that this business about three-story medium-density apartment residential was all along that side of the street. And the increase in density in that area is something that I thought the city was interested in doing, because there's going to be a rapid transit line going by on Clark North Road, and there's going to be a station at Boquitlam Plaza. And, you know, I've traveled all over the world and seen all kinds of beautiful cities, and the business about increasing density, I think that's something that usually happens when you're trying to develop a city. And I was pleased that the area I thought was zoned for three-story medium-density apartments. And I'm kind of wondering why this lady is, Ms. Black is...
Okay, we won't be referring to anyone else. Just make your case for the...
Yeah, basically, I just think that that's a great idea, because I was worried that Coquitlam was basically sprawling up Burke Mountain and wherever they can go onto recreational or green space, and not having inflow and increasing the density, especially along rapid transit corridors. I would think that that's a very good way for the city to go eventually, and this business about the community plan for Boquitlam seems like a very good one. And so I don't know why there's this opposition, actually. I thought this is all written up on the website, and that's the way it is.
Sir, there is no question that Coquitlam wants to put density around its transit stations. The question before us today is the level of density on this particular property. There's been a proposal, obviously, for density, and there's going to be neighbors...
There's other proposals already that have been...
Sir, sir, every neighbor has the right to come and offer their opinion, and council has the challenge of weighing all those opinions. So we just ask you to comment about the merits of this particular application, and then...
Well, I think it's a very good application, and it should go forward. And I think that whole side of that street should develop, just like Easton and Foster and some of the other developments that are going along that corridor.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea, because I think it's high time that Coquitlam started to join the major cities in the world in terms of increasing the density and inflow along transit corridors.
Okay, before you go away, sir, sir, we've got one council member that has a question that might be for you. Counselor O'Neill.
Actually, not a question, but it's a question to staff coming from your question. Under the broad designation in our official community plan of medium-density apartment, to staff, could one see actually a bigger building, a higher building on this lot? A medium-density apartment, my understanding, could be even bigger? Is that correct? Sorry, I'm asking staff.
Through your worship, yes, the applicant could potentially be using another zone that's also considered to be a corresponding zone to this land use designation, that zone being the RM3 zone, which allows up to a density of 1.85, whereas this zone allows for 1.45. So the applicant is using the lesser of the two zones under this land use designation.
And what height of the building would one normally see with a density of 1.85?
Depends on the site's size. We have typically seen developments in the RM3, up to four stories, but again, it all depends, there's no necessarily height restriction, it's working with the density relative to the size of the site, and how much floor area is allowed relative to the size of that site.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other questions of that speaker? Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
My name is John Ritchie, I'm with Spring Bank Developments. The applicant on this site, my office is at Suite 330319 West Pender Street, Vancouver, BC, and I just want to speak to a couple of comments.
If you could just pull the microphone straight toward your chin and speak.
Is that any better?
There is a little bit.
Okay. Just wanted to maybe answer a couple of questions and speak to a couple of the comments that came up. The first question was the item of four townhouses, and in the RT2 zone, it was there, as it was zoned and the development permit that was issued was for four suites, and they were approximately 3,000 square feet per suite. And when I bought this property off of the applicant who had done that, he went to great pains to explain to me how I could easily put illegal basement suites into them, to double the number of residents in the neighborhood, because they were all ready for, the basements were large enough to have suites in them. We, that's not really what I was interested in, we were looking at doing a development that was more in keeping with the plan for the neighborhood. So we looked at the official community plan, and the official community plan called for RM2 or RM3. We looked at what was existing in the neighborhood, which, as was pointed out, was all single-family and attached residential. We looked at what was coming for the neighborhood, which is neighborhood attached residential, which is duplex, triplex, fourplexes on the corners if you have enough site. And we designed a building that we thought fit in with the character of the neighborhood. It's why we went to the RM2 instead of the RM3. It was able, we were able to give it a little bit of a cottagey, a cottagey look. And if, may I have that rendering again to put that back up? I don't know if it's really obvious in this rendering, but what we have facing Dogwood Street is where the people are, they're in front of one building, and then where you see the tree, there's actually a walkway between the two buildings. And so what you end up with there is you end up with two buildings that, you know, one per lot. So the scale of the actual building when you're standing on Dogwood Street looking is very, very similar to what you're going to see across the street with the duplexes. The site slopes from the duplexes on the east side of Dogwood down to the west, and so their roof lines are actually going to be higher than our roof lines. So we buried, we buried the site, we do have an underground park aid. Counselor Nicholson, you were asking, it's underneath that level. It's, the site slopes about seven and a half feet from Dogwood down to the lane, so that's almost a full level right there. So we're going down, instead of going down our normal eight or nine feet, we're going to be going down 11 to 14 feet with our excavation at Dogwood. On the lane, it's going to be your typical excavation. So we've used the slope of the site to create what looks like a two-story building effectively on Dogwood, and, but is in reality a three-story building, because we're trying to keep the character of the neighborhood. I can't really comment on, it is going to be more dense, we are increasing the density, but I think that's what the plan calls for. And yes, really, they are apartment-sized homes, but again, that's what we believe the plan is calling for. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. On the right-hand side, down below, right on the corner, yeah, right there, that little lower building, what is that?
Well, that's, that's the ground floor, or that is the ground floor of that building. There's a retaining wall, there's a retaining wall coming through here, and so, and so it'll drop down, so when you're standing, when you're standing on Regan, looking at the building, it's three stories. You come around the corner onto Dogwood, and you stand and look at the building, and you see what you're seeing here, which is two stories.
Okay, thank you.
Because of the slope. Only we cut it, we cut it off, put a retaining wall, and then flatten it out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just want to confirm, while you're here, you mentioned the roof lines, you're talking, you've actually surveyed the roofing lines of the duplex next door would be...
I haven't surveyed them, I looked at the plans on the, there's a brand-new duplex built across the street, I looked at the plans, and I eyeballed it. There, I eyeballed it. I looked at the city, the city topographical map, and I believe that they're six feet higher than us, and they're a two-story building.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Are there any others? No, we're good. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers? You can speak again, if you like.
The question was asked about the number of townhouses, and the application says six one-bedroom, 15 two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom, so that would be the 24 units that I was referring to? So I don't know if you... So just to clarify that, because the question was asked?
Sorry, again, the numbers were?
There was, sorry, I don't have the paper in front of me now.
Oh, could you grab the paper, please?
In the staff report, refers to six one-bedroom, 15 two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom units.
So 22, 22, that's 22 units.
22 units.
15, 6, 21.
15 and 6 and 1 is 22.
It's okay. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hi, good evening. So my name's Kevin, I'm just living actually right next to the...
Actually, we have to give your name and your address.
My address is 728B Dogwood Street, so my name's Kevin, so I'm just living right next to the development area, so I'm...
And your, and your, sorry, I have to ask, your last name, it's actually a requirement.
Okay, Kevin Chu, CJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have really simple things to say. So I've been living in the neighborhood for like ever since high school, so it has always been like a single-home, you know, duplex area, and has always been a very quiet area. So I guess our concerns for us mainly is just how it would affect the quietness of the area, the complexity of the neighborhood, and from the petition that we have signed, that already showed that the concerns that we have regarding the development. And I know the city is, you know, with the rapid transit coming, you know, an increase in density, you know, certain things are inevitable, but I just hope that you guys can put the needs of the people within the neighborhood into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you. Perhaps for Mr. Ritchie, we're talking about roof lines. The attachment four in our package, which looks like drawing A6 of yours, in the east elevation of Dogwood, shows us the adjacent property with a roof line where the roof peak is effectively level with the eaves of your project. And so that tells us how it fits with the adjacent property, and I think you were talking about properties across the street in terms of elevations and roof lines. Maybe you could talk a little more about that?
Two things, yes, I was talking about across the street. The, well, I guess I'm going to make three comments. Second one is that the house next door was not surveyed, so that's a contextual drawing, but it doesn't show the actual height of the building. And the third thing is that I don't think that is long-term use for that property either. That is where that house is today, and I understand that we are going to be higher than that property, for sure. But as someone alluded to on Dogwood, Dogwood Street, I believe, is the start of the RM2, RM3 designated zoning, and if any other development areas, you know, can be looked at and relied on to show us how this direction this is going to take, the plan for the city is that this is to, that Dogwood towards Boquitlam Plaza is meant to be higher density. So I would suggest that in the long term, that neighboring property will look more like us.
And thank you for pointing out it wasn't surveyed.
It wasn't.
I realize it looks, it looks a bit squat in the drawing.
Yes. It does, you.
Okay. Okay.
And finally, may I, for staff? We're doing some revisiting of the Boquitlam Neighborhood Plan. That would include this area, is that correct, or no? We have, I don't suppose, Mr. McIntyre, you'd like to second-guess the results of that revisit? It would be unfair of me to ask you to, let me put it that way. Thank you.
Even a first guess. Okay. Please, sir, step forward.
Mayor and council, I just want to say, I've lived on that street, my wife and I, for 22 years.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Pardon?
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, my name is Ray Littrem. I live at 729 Dogwood, which would be right across the street from that second unit over. That's the reason we sold our house just this week, because that does not belong on that block. It's a nice residential duplex-zoned area, and that is going to up the traffic so badly that it just, it's just too much to live there. So we have literally sold our house just this week because of that, so that's really all I have to say, but that's why we got out, because that doesn't belong on that block.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hi, good evening, major and the councilor. My name is Ivan, my last name Chu. I live at 728B Dogwood Street, just next to the developing area. I strongly, I strongly object to rezoning, okay? I tell, developing, they only make money, they just want to make money, they don't concern the people living in that area. Okay, if the rezoning, the two blocks, they build two, two buildings, totally is 24 units, 22 or 34 units, and my house next to the site, next to the developing site, and the light, the sunset, the sunlight, and then the air, I think it affects my house. I think, yeah, the house, the new building tall, higher than my house, and bigger, the area bigger than my house, and we bought the wind or the sunshine, they, I think it affects my, my house. Okay? If you're living, if you're living in, next to the, to the building, do you think, you feel comfortable? I don't think so. So I strongly object to rezoning, okay?
Thank you, Counselor O'Neill.
Excuse me, I just wanted to clarify where you live.
Sure.
Are you living, sorry, no, no, in terms of your...
You can step back to the microphone.
It seems to me, if I'm reading this plan correctly, you're beside it to the east or the west, or are you below it to the south?
So to the, uh, number one, that, number one.
You're number one, and that's, that's actually to the south of the property.
Yes.
So I don't see how that would actually affect your sunlight.
I think so, higher, higher, and the wind, the wind, the, the wind, I think it's bought the wind, you cover the, at the area.
Okay, I can, I don't know what the wind, but I know that the sunshine will still, won't be blocked by a higher building, because that, that building is going to be to the north of you.
Yeah. But the wind, I think the wind is, the wind will be, will be bought by the building, the area bigger than my, than my house. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor O'Neill. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
That concludes the items on this evening's public hearing agenda.
Okay, we'll adjourn the public hearing, and in about two minutes, we'll convene a council meeting as soon as the appropriate technology has been switched around.